I do apologize for the tardiness. We ran over earlier in our hearing, so therefore we kind of ran over in our executive session, trying to get some items straightened out for tonight. All right? If I could have you guys pause for a moment of silence with me and then we'll do the pledge right after that. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We do not have special recognition tonight because we are still in summer. However, we will not be in summer starting next week. So, but right now we are still in summer. Public participation? Do we have any public participation? Okay? We do not have any public participation during our regular session, regular work session. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make an amend, uh, change to the agenda.
Absolutely. You want to amend it?
I want to amend it. If we can add item R for the superintendent's contract.
Okay. Motion on the floor to add item R in relation to the superintendent's contract. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you so much. Five zero. Right? We'll go right into the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Anderson Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I'll take Mr. Johnson. Second for Mr. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Five zero. Superintendent's reports.
Yes ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the board. In the financial report, the special purpose local option for education sales tax five distribution for May was $1,798,794, which is an increase of $107,428 from the previous month. Second item, the title ad valorem tax collection for May was $623,699. And finally, the business services department has begun the process of closing out fiscal year 2022. As part of that process, July and August tax collections are accrued into the fiscal year as well as payroll expenses for 10 and 11-month employees. The final ending fund balance will be available at the October board meeting. And that is the financial report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. Any questions on the financial report? Okay. If you go ahead with the strategic plan report.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Madam Superintendent. I have some highlights from the superintendent's report. First, starting with student achievement and success, all of them are noteworthy. It was difficult to pick on one. We have the item there about Camp Ignite, but I wanted to spotlight the Camp Newton. From June 6th through 10th of 2022, the Newton County Schools Technology Department staff hosted Camp Newton, a coding summer camp in partnership with the Newton County YMCA. The camp's presenters' mission was to give students free access to technology and opportunities to learn to code. Mrs. Eijama Johnson and Mrs. Missy Smith led the charge in creating content and activities for the camp. Students were able to become Minecraft education ambassadors and learn how to code robots. And that was under student achievement and success. Under high-quality workforce, continuing our spotlight with our district's technology department, during the summer of 2022, eight students served as interns in the technology department. Having the opportunity to train the next generation of technical engineers was incredible because the students learned real-life skills that will increase their employability beyond graduation. This was an excellent way to build capacity in Newton County schools. On a culture, climate, and communication, I want to highlight a new initiative. From July 21st to July 25th, Oxford College of Emory University hosted 60 local high school students for the first college summer experience program. Thirty students, each from Putnam and Newton Counties, lived on campus for a week, sampling college-level courses with Oxford faculty, attending classes designed to enhance readiness for higher education, and learning about campus life from current Oxford student. Further in the document, you'll see some of the other things that they did and some of the classes they participated in. The program is another great example of local education partners working to help students realize goals and dreams that they did not think were possible. And finally, under organizational and operational effectiveness, student services department personnel successfully submitted the required year-end reports for the Georgia Department of Education, including student records and student class. Additionally, adjustments were made in Infinite Campus, the school system's student information system, to transfer students for the 22-23 school year. And those are just a few of the highlights from this report, from the superintendent's report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. May I have a motion to move the superintendent's reports forward so we can have discussion? Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and second. Any discussion, feedback, comments? I do want to give something. Mr. Roundtree, the first words you said was, "It's so many to highlight, I didn't know where to start." This is, and I agree, reading through it for the summer, especially the Oxford College and Emory University or Oxford of Emory, that's a partnership that we have been trying to do for a very, very, very long time. And to see that finally come into fruition where kids can go and experience what college life is like in their local community, a high-achieving college at that, uh, you know, and see that, and for them to want to partner with us to make that become a reality, that is absolutely wonderful. And 60 students total. I saw some of the parents who had students there and they spent the night, so they got a real live experience and stuff. And so I just think about, you know, some of the parents who posted about it and stuff. So that is an awesome experience. So thank you guys so much for that. So it was some great ones on here, absolutely, considering that it's the summer. So I'm looking forward to seeing what comes to the school year, what will be on here and the students that will see coming here to get awards and presentations. Okay? All right. Let's see. Motion is moved forward on the floor to accept the superintendent's report. All in favor? Okay, five zero. Thank you. There is no old business. We'll move on to new business.
Yes ma'am. And item A, the superintendent recommends the adoption of the fiscal year FY 2023 millage rates. The recommended millage rate for maintenance and operations is reduced to 16.788 from 18.288. The debt service millage rate is recommended to remain at zero mils as we will be using ESPLUST five funds for principal and interest bond payments. The total combined millage rate is 16.788 mils, and that is item A, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. May I have a motion to move item A forward to open the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Coggan. Is there a second? Okay, I'll take Anderson Bailey. Second for Anderson Bailey. The floor, we've had the three hearings. The floor is now open for discussion, questions, comments, or feedback from board members.
Yep, I would love to see it as a full rollback rate of 15.516. I do understand through the three different public hearings that that may not be feasible this year based on the superintendent's professional recommendation and the work of her team. And so if, if I choose to vote no, it is not because I want the rate to stay the same, but because I would love to see it fully, fully rolled back, but also understand that we have business we must tend to and we will continue to endeavor to do our best to keep taxes as low as possible for our citizens while making sure that our students are taken care of and our teachers. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other comments or feedback? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Okay. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Four one. Okay. Item B?
Item B, the superintendent recommends the adoption of policy IKBB. As background, by August 1st, 2022, each local board of education must adopt a complaint resolution policy to address complaints alleging violations of Georgia's Code Section 20-1-11. And the draft, draft policy as provided by the school board attorney is provided there for you. And that is item B.
Okay, thank you so much. Dr. Barr, this is in draft?
Yes ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. I need to look at the printed agenda. Is this a first read?
Yes.
It's okay. Thank you. All right, so that's what I'm looking for. Let me get a printed agenda out because it's not marked on my computer.
I'm glad you're asking because I didn't, I was uncomfortable making a decision.
Yeah, it's a first read.
I thought it had to be up here for 30 days.
I just need to find my-
To the second meeting in August.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So what we're doing, you guys, first reads on any policy, they must by state law sit on the table for 30 days. And that is to allow public input. So this will be placed on, I know I sound muffled with the mask, this will be placed on the website for a public review of public input as well. So this is a first read of this policy. So you'll have 30 days to respond or put input in regards to this policy. So this is not an action item for tonight, you guys. Okay? Any questions for Dr. Barr on the policy, though?
Well, just for clarification, are, it's okay that we don't act on it tonight? I mean, I'm just getting conflicting that the detail here says by August 1st, we have to have acted on it.
Oh, this is, is this, did this come from the legislation?
Yes.
Okay. So this, so this one is a first read, but it does have to be, it has deadlines. So the state board has already did their part on this then. So yeah, so we have to act on this because this is a required. So, and legal has looked at it and drafted it the way it needs to read, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we do have to act on this. So this, so those are things that went into legislation that are requirement, it's going to be a number, is three items, I believe, total?
Yeah, there are three, three legislative pieces, but they don't all have to be ready until later on in the year.
Okay, they each have different deadlines. So this one is going to, thank you, Trey, for seeing that. So this one is going to need to be in action tonight. So I need a motion on the floor for item B.
So moved.
I think in this case, she's correct that state law supersedes board policy.
Yeah. And that's the same with the other two because the other, there's another one that had a September deadline, I believe? And then the last one, I think, was January. Mm-hmm. Yeah. So that's why I asked, this is the one the state board has already approved their side of it. Okay. All right. So back to, I need a motion to approve item B.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Coggan. May I have a second? We gotta act on this one.
Second.
Okay. Second. So I'll open the floor for discussion because your face looks puzzled and I know you got questions. So floor is now open for discussion. So there were three items that came out of legislation. One was the divisive concepts. The other was the book.
Parents Bill Rights.
And then, let me think.
Mr. Kim signed into law consumer education requirements?
That's a different one. It's one that had to be act on right now. Uh, I don't know what the third one is. But based on those, those had specific deadlines that were to go into effect this school year. And so the state board had to approve their part and then from there, local boards of education had to approve them. But they each have, all three have different deadlines that they have to go into effect.
And all different processes. Parents Bill Rights, the other one was the Media Center, that's what it is, the-
Books. Those had to have an appeal process for the books. If a parent wanted to appeal a book, they'd come off of curriculum or out of the library. So, so just to help you with clarity.
Yeah, and, and the attorney has drafted the piece to match the, it's just the complaints process that if you, if we don't do X and Y, then here's the procedure. And so they have reviewed the legislation and then there was a draft that just came out of the, the policy.
And this is the divisive concepts one, the first one I just named.
Yes, and so you don't have a lot of wiggle room because the law kind of specifically spells out. We're just trying in, in our attempts to streamline the complaints processes so that they sort of, as we build, they, they match so that you don't have 15 different processes for, oh.
Oh. And one of the reasons why this had to be approved prior to the beginning or right at the beginning of the school year, this is Will Wade's bill, and that is because you had to have that part to allow parents, that was the piece that he went back and added into the bill.
So there's not a whole lot of wiggle room, Mr. Bailey, for us to change it around.
Trust me.
It is unfortunately, it is what it is.
I just pulled it up and yes, you're absolutely right. There's not much.
It is, there's nothing. It's not like one of our local policies that we, the board develops. It's really a state mandate that we have to have it in place.
Yep.
And so-
For those listening, we don't love those. We don't love state mandate policies from local boards.
That's why I'm trying to keep a straight face.
We do not love them and there are three hefty ones that we have to deal with. And so we're working closely with our legal team to make sure that we cover everything and that we don't do more than we have to. We do exactly what's required.
And the complaint resolution was the resolve for those people that did not like the bill. So that was the last piece he added into there for this bill to pass. Because it was, well, just originally how it was written, just anybody could come off of the street and complain about certain things. But now we're adding the complaint process, it has to be a parent, they have to be in the grade level, there were some other things added to it. So that was the resolve. It still not, does not resolve those that don't like it, but, but that was the resolve. So yeah, this is-
Well, thank you for the clarity.
No problem. So all in favor? Unfortunately, all in favor, let me hear you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Okay. Four one, we gotta, I feel you, Mr. Johnson, I feel you. Okay, four one on policy. Okay. Item C?
Item C, the superintendent recommends the approval of a temporary increase in the rate for certified substitute teachers who serve in long-term substitute teaching assignments. A temporary increase is recommended to support the recruitment and retention of long-term substitute teachers who hold teaching certification and can serve as a teacher of record in vacant teaching positions or when qualified teachers are otherwise unavailable due to serious illness, maternity leave, or other extenuating circumstances. And you can see the rate increases proposed there, long-term certified substitute to $150 and long-term certified substitute who is retired from the school district 165. And that is item C for consideration.
Thank you so much, Dr. Barr. I need a motion for item C.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, been moved and second. Is there any discussion? Having none, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? Five zero, thank you. Item D?
Superintendent recommends the library management system and cloud migration needed for the school system be purchased from Follett School Solutions. The total cost is $28,507.42, and this is a renewal of an existing product. Purchasing documentation is provided and the funding source is identified, and that is item D, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. I need a motion for item D, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and second. The floor is open for discussion on item D. Any discussion or questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five zero, thank you. Item E?
The superintendent recommends instructional resources needed for the school system be purchased from the Really Great Reading Company. The total contract value is $43,769.50, and this is a continuation of an existing program within the district. Deals with strategic goal area one, the purchasing documentation is provided, and that is item E, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to move E forward? Okay, is there a second? Been moved and second. Floor is open for discussion or questions?
Just, I mean, besides the comment of what a great name for a company, Really Great Reading Company, is the contract value, could you go over that number again just for clarity? Okay, thank you.
You can disregard the additional zeros.
Okay.
And this is one of the programs that helps students with reading comprehension. It's early intervention programs for those students that are at risk.
Exactly. These, this is the curriculum that we use, that we use for the EIP program, otherwise, the Early Intervention Program, otherwise known as EIP.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Okay, five zero, thank you. Item F?
Item F, the superintendent recommends the online and blended curriculum needed for the school system be purchased from Imagine Learning, formerly Edgenuity. The total cost is $309,097.36. Imagine Learning's curriculum will be utilized to provide a self-paced virtual instruction option for students in grades three through 12 who select that educational model and is a supplemental resource for middle and high schools. Purchasing documentation is provided and the funding source is identified, and that is item F, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. May I have a motion for item F? Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and second. Floor is open for discussion or questions?
This is for the online academy, right? Virtual-
Virtual instructional program, and we also use it for credit recovery.
VIP, right.
VIP and credit recovery.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Item G?
Item G, the superintendent recommends the approval of the 2023 Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Program Improvement Plan. The FY 2023 grant amounts were approved by the Georgia Department of Education in June, but have not yet been released to school districts. Part of getting access to those funds, which amount to $262,390, is the approval by the Board of Education here tonight. And so that is item G. And the plan is attached for review.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for G, please?
So moved.
Needed second? Okay, the floor is now open for discussion, questions, or feedback. Okay, having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Five zero. H?
Superintendent recommends the computers, computers and associated items needed for the career technical and agricultural education program be purchased from ByteSpeed LLC. The total cost is $150,527. A summary of the recommended purchase is provided there for your review. This deals with strategic goal area one and four. Purchasing documentation is provided and the funding source is identified, and that is item H, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. May I have a motion to move it forward, please?
So moved.
I need a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. Floor is now open for discussion.
The refurbishing, the five-year cycle, will that be a cost to us?
Mr. Johnson, could you repeat the question?
It's on a five-year cycle of refurbishment. And I'm saying the refurbishment process, is that, would that be a cost on us or this part of the contract?
It's, it's not in the contract, it's just our practice. So we replace the necessary CTA computers every five years so that we're staying fairly current with the technology. They're pretty much out of life at the end of those five years. So the, five years ago, we replaced these labs, and five years before that, we did also. Five years from now, we will again. So that's kind of a reoccurring budget item in our CTA budget is to make sure that we're broadcasting out five years in advance to make sure that we know that every year we're around the same number. We've done a good job of spreading out the purchases so that we stagger those, we don't have, you know, half the computers all at once. So, so we've divided them up to where it's about that number each year, and so that's built into the budget.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And some of those funds come from the plan that we just approved-
Correct.
For the Carl, Carly Perkins?
Okay, any more questions for Dr. Snit? Thank you. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Item I?
Item I, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract with the Newton County Sheriff's Office for school resource officers be renewed for an additional contract term. The total cost is $1,378,800. Contract documentation is provided there for your review and the funding source is identified, and that is item I, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to move I forward, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and second. The floor is now open for discussion, questions, or feedback.
I notice a renewal. This is significantly increased, is that right?
It's, I believe it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. And the primary reason Sheriff Brown did a very good job of breaking down every expenditure that's related to the contract. And so we were able to evaluate that and see the increased cost as it relates to salary and benefits, as well as some other operating cost and the addition of a roaming supervisor that can provide support to some other schools within the school district. So those are the primary reasons for the cost increases that you see there.
Okay, thank you. And then that includes the K-9 support as well?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Question, would you expand on your statement revolving supervisor?
It's a position that will oversee the school resource officers that are in the schools and will also serve as an additional officer that will support our schools that do not have a resource officer assigned to them.
Fulfilling both functions?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions about I? Having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero. Item J?
In item J, the superintendent recommends the access control upgrades needed for the school system be purchased from Tech Optics Incorporated. Total cost is $67,614.87. School system currently uses the Amano Net Access Control Platform. The school system will upgrade to their new web-based Omnia Enterprise solution. The solicitation included the software, all parts and equipment, as well as the installation and configuration needed to complete this work. This deals with strategic goal area four. The purchasing documentation is provided and the funding source is identified, and that is item J.
Thank you. May I have a motion for J, please?
So moved.
Now y'all, I need a second. I thought y'all was gonna be back to back. Need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Wait a minute, Dr. Barr? Wait a minute.
I was trying to keep it moving.
I need a second from up here.
I'll give it a second because I just would like to ask some questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bailey. Floor is now open for discussion.
The building access control upgrades, that's essential right now for security purposes?
Critical, critical. The systems that we really have are completely outdated and we are really unable to update the current systems like we need to be able to do. And this is, will certainly help us in that process.
But this is how staff get in and out of the buildings?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's for all locations?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Barr on item J? Having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Y'all slowing down. Wait a minute, I have a two, three. Okay, any opposed? Okay, five zero. Item K?
Item K, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for HVAC services be awarded to Mann Mechanical Incorporated of Decatur, Georgia. The effective date will be July 28th, 2022, and the expiration date will be July 27th, 2023. Estimated contract value is $450,000. a solicitation for one-year contract for HVAC services was opened July thirteen twenty twenty-two uh and you can see an outline of the results there, upon review it was determined that Mann Mechanical Company offered the best value to the school system, this deals with strategic goal area four, contract documentation is provided as well as the funding source is identified and that is item K.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr, may I have a motion to move K forward, please?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and second, floor is now open for discussion, questions or comments? I do have one, does anybody else have a question? Okay, I'll go ahead and ask mine then, Dr. Barr, do you know if they work with any other school system, I'm looking through the contract, do you know?
I I do not recall which school systems, but yes, they do.
They do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they had experience with working with school systems.
Yes, ma'am, they do.
Okay. Any other questions? Having none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five zero, item L?
An item L, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for electrical services awarded to Osborne Electrical Services of Covington, Georgia be renewed for an additional contract term with an effective date of July twenty-eight twenty twenty-two and an expiration date of July twenty-seven twenty twenty-three, the estimated contract value is one hundred fifty thousand dollars, this deals with strategic goal area four, contract documentation is provided and the funding source is there for your review and that is item L, madam chair.
Thank you so much, may I have a motion?
So moved.
I need a second, okay, been moved and second, this is a renewable, any questions? Okay, I'll call for the question, item, for item L, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, five zero, item M?
Item M, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term, the first is Mayfield Dairy Farms for ice cream, contract value is forty thousand dollars and the second is Sanitec Systems for Safety and Sanitation Program, estimated contract value is fifty thousand dollars, both of those are renewals, uh the purchasing and contract documentation is provided and all of that is uh school nutrition program funds and that is item M.
Thank you, Dr. Barr, may I have a motion to move M forward?
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved and second, floor is open for discussion or questions? I do have one and it's not necessarily towards the ice cream but it does have to do with food contracts, Dr. Barr, so let's just say, I mean, because um during the summer, we've had some items in grocery stores for regular shopping that has become um scarce, so, and that's without a school year starting across the nation for all schools, so what happens in the event some of the items start becoming scarce, is it somewhere in the contract where, okay?
It allows for substitutions upon approval.
Okay.
And so they work through and that, and that happens frequently right now, just like it does in the grocery store, um and so last year they spent a considerable amount of time making sure that the substitutes were of equal value in those kinds of things, but they've done a really good job and the vendor has, the food vendor in this situation has done a really good job with that also.
Okay, if they can't find equal uh value, are we reimbursed with the contract?
Uh no, typically we will decline it and probably make some menu changes and those kinds of things to accommodate for it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Having none, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Okay, five zero, item N?
An item N, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy and that is item N.
Okay, thank you so much, I have a motion for item N, please?
So moved, second.
Okay, motion and second, um any questions about surplus? Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, five zero, item O?
An item O, the superintendent recommends the approval of the application for the Georgia School Boards Association Recognition Program, that is item O, madam chair.
Thank you so much, may I have a motion for item O?
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved and second, floor is open for discussion, we need to make sure we get all get our self-assessment in tonight, the deadline is in a couple of days, okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Five zero, item P?
The superintendent recommends the local board governance annual report be completed as required by the Georgia Department of Education and the training report is included there for your review, item P, madam chair.
Okay, item P, may I have a motion, please, for item P?
So moved.
Okay, been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved and properly second, this is about our training hours, you know, the state requires us to have a certain amount of training hours each year and we have to turn those in, um it's our per se professional development um to be um good board members, um ethical board members.
Couple guys went above and beyond, man, I hear you.
All right.
That's your credit.
May I um, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Yeah, we got a valvatorian and salutatorian on here, don't we?
Making us look bad.
Mr. Anderson Bailey and Mr. Eddie Johnson, pal and sales, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Y'all can oppose this, it's a requirement, okay, in five zero. Wait a minute.
Now we get a item R.
You gotta, you're all back in executive session.
We do have to go back in executive session, so I need a motion to go into executive session but you need to word it a certain way, so I want to make sure you remember to word it correctly, whoever wants to make the motion.
I make a motion-
Let's see if you get it right.
I make a motion to go into, back into executive session for discussion of the superintendent's contract.
Perfect, perfect, Ms. Coggan, she's about to pass the valve up here, perfect, so we have to go back in executive session but state law requires us to say specifically why we have to go back in exec- executive session, so the motion on the floor is to go back in executive set, session to discuss the superintendent's contract, is there a second?
Second.
A whole bunch of y'all seconded out with me, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll now go back in executive session, you guys, we'll come back out of executive session, the only thing we'll have left after that is the superincon, superintendent's contract and the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, do you want us to stay in here or?
Let's just stay in here.
Okay.
Uh the-